I'd like to call to order the meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 624. Ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Lloyd.
Here.
Daniels.
Here.
Ellison.
Here.
Newmaster.
Here.
Streifoggi.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Arcan.
Here.
Thank you. I would ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have before us this evening an agenda. I would ask for a motion to approve. So moved. A motion by Ms. Thompson and a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. And we have an agenda. We are also really excited this evening. We have a new school board student liaison. And, oop, I gotta pull up to my... There she is. Okay. Lydia, can you help us pronounce your last name to make sure we get it right?
It's Kleinhans. It's very German.
Kleinhans. Okay, wonderful. So this is Lydia Kleinhans. She is going to be our student representative for the school year, 12th grade student at White Bear Lake Area High School. She's involved in the Student Council. She's a trumpet section leader in the band, plays club soccer, and works at a lifeguard at the YMCA. She's also a part-time PSEO student at St. Kate's. So Lydia, we are thrilled to have you.
I think we're gonna do a picture.
Okay, and we're gonna do a picture. And I just...
With Lydia.
Yeah, and I just want to note that not all school boards in the state of Minnesota have a student liaison, and so we love it and we are really fortunate to have students up here with us. So we'll do a real quick picture and then we'll come back to the agenda. All right, we also have before us a consent agenda, which are the regular things that come before us monthly, including donations. And as always, our community has been incredibly generous to our community, especially for back-to-school items. And so thank you to everyone who made donations. I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Streifoggi and a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Daniels. Any questions? Okay, this will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Lloyd.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Streifoggi.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcan.
Aye.
And we have a consent agenda. It is now the time for public forum portion of the meeting. There were zero requests submitted to speak. So we will move into our informational items. Informational item C1, the superintendent's and the students' report. Dr. Kazmicek and Ms. Kleinhans.
Thank you Chair Ellison, members of the board. So Lydia, I'll turn it over to you here to kick us off.
Hello, White Bear Lake families and community. It is very exciting to be back at school, and I'm very excited to be serving as the class of 2025's student liaison. The most exciting thing about being back at school has been our transition into our new combined high school. After having our very first home football game on August 29th, you can definitely feel the excitement and pride that came from our unified student body. And as a senior, I can confidently say that we are all very proud to be graduating from such a beautiful campus. So thank you to everyone who has made this happen. Fall sports and the school musical, among other exciting opportunities, are back. With our beautiful new sports fields and facilities, I recommend attending as many fall sports as possible, including soccer, volleyball, and football. Shout out to our undefeated girls soccer team. However, as a musician, I think the most exciting part about being back to school has been seeing the brand-new music rooms and seeing the new auditorium that is still under construction. I would also like to highlight, the fall musical is underway. Auditions begin this week. You can access all of the information you need at the White Bear Lake Area High School Theater website. You'll never regret spending your money and evening on seeing the fall musical. It is always fantastic to see, and you can tell our theater kids pour their hearts and souls into their performances. Lastly, our next football game is this Friday, September 13th at 7:00 PM. It is against Woodbury and the famous Pinkout in honors of those who've battled breast cancer. You can purchase tickets online through the Activities and Athletic section of the weekly announcements Google document.
All right, thank you, Lydia. Nice job.
Yeah.
I'll just roll right into mine. So we've enjoyed welcoming students back for the 24-25 academic year. Elementary and secondary students started last week, and our early childhood programs began this week. So throughout the district, there were many excited smiles as students returned after summer vacation or in some instances, and quite a few instances, for the very first time as new students in White Bear. And we wish all of our students a terrific year. In addition to our weekly e-newsletters and usual information, share outs, we invite you to enjoy two Independent School District 624-inspired initiatives on our district Facebook and Instagram pages. Every Friday, the district will post a video update of the week in 62.4 seconds. And weekday mornings, right at 6:24 AM, we will share 624 facts on the district's Facebook and Instagram pages. Videos can also be found on the district's YouTube channel. District community members aged 65 and older are invited to apply for our Lifetime Senior Activity Pass, which allows free entry into a variety of activities for entertainment, including home athletic contests. If you'd like to join the more than 1,000 senior community members who enjoy the benefit, call my office at 651-407-7563 to request a free Lifetime Senior Activity Pass.
Wonderful. Any questions for Dr. Kazmicek? Wonderful, thank you. Move into our first, or our second informational item, C2, the Opening School Report. So this is always a great moment, beginning of the school year, where we get to hear from all the various departments and hear about what's going on in the buildings. So this is exciting. Dr. Kay.
All right, I'll kick it off. So leadership team, I think we're starting with our teaching and learning department, is that right? So Dr. Gillespie and Mrs. Babish. So yeah, this is always a highlight. We look forward to this every year. It's been a great start to the year. I did make it into each building. I know I spent all day Thursday last week at the high school and just enjoying that historic day that it was, 9 through 12 altogether. And then throughout the day today, I finished up getting into all the buildings and checking in with folks. And it's just, there's a lot of real positive energy throughout. So we're excited to be able to share a lot of information tonight. So Alison, you're kicking it off.
Chair Ellison, members of the board, thank you for having us tonight. It's really an honor to be able to share the work that we did in preparation of this school year. And this school year, as Dr. Kay just said, has been so fun to be a part of, watching our high school open and just everything that's going on in the buildings. So I wanted to provide a brief teaching and learning overview. People often think, because I share the title with one department, that we only have one teaching and learning department. And so we actually have four departments that encompass teaching and learning, and you're going to hear from all four of the directors. That's Educational Equity and Achievement, Student Support Services, Technology and Innovation, and Teaching and Learning. And all of us work in partnership to support our principals. And I think that's really important, because we're really intentional about that work and really excited about all the things that we're doing to make sure our students reach their outcomes and their, you know, whole secondary pathways. And so really supporting the principals who in turn support all of our amazing educators and staff. This summer has been a really large one and really busy, as we continue to really prepare ourselves for this upcoming school year. I wanted to share in four different areas. We have worked really hard around developing our leaders. And when we think of leaders, we don't always just think about the people with formal titles. Leadership is a disposition, not solely a position, I often talk about. And so how do we build leadership amongst our instructional leaders and make sure that our principals and district staff have what they need to navigate all the different changes that we have, but also how do we continue to build up educator leaders and other staff leaders that really can help us as we lean into the work that we've been doing? So the three areas that we're focusing on as we really kicked off this, in the summer and into the school year, our instructional leadership, how do we support our principals and educators around that so that we can continue to impact student outcome measures positively? How do we manage change? We've managed a lot of change. Some of it, we've controlled and we're really excited about it, but some of it is changes that are just off, you know, in the world. And so how do we come together and really make sure that we're doing that well? And then always our family and community partnerships. We value our community, we value our families, and how do we make sure that that relationship is truly a partnership? And so those are the three areas we're focusing on. The theme you'll hear me talk about a lot is how we intentionally collaborate. And so this summer, people will often ask us, "How was your summer off?" And sometimes summer is the busiest time for, at least for parts of it. I think everyone tries really hard to make sure we take care of ourselves as well. But district building leaders, educators, they collaborated all summer long around curriculum, around assessment, around reporting, and then professional development. And I'm really proud of the work that we've done. We've done, as you know, a really significant heavy lift with implementing new literacy curriculum or the work we're doing around science. And all of that is done in collaboration with teacher leaders, principals, co-leading that with our district departments. And we're really intentional about how do we create a culture that really is that partnership between buildings and district, and where sometimes it'll be like, "Never the two shall meet," or "us versus them." And I really, truly believe that when we get that partnership functioning at its highest, that's when we'll have the greatest impact for our kids. And so this summer, I wish I could count how many people were a part of things, but I have my greatest fears I leave someone out. So I can just promise you, every single, pretty much every day, even in July, where it's probably the quietest around here, there were people leaning into those areas. Finally, we just revamped our data days. For those of you who've been here a while, we had one day that we would all come together in August to look at our data, and we have extended that to two days, and I rebranded it as the Instructional Leadership Institute. And it was a really energizing two days. Teams of educators and leaders came together to really look at, how do we continuously improve it as an organization? What are the outcome measures that we're deciding, this is how we know we've been successful with students? And then where do we need to get better? Where is it frustrating that they haven't moved yet, and why haven't they moved? And so the commitment amongst all of our educators to not only really dive into their data at their schools and sites, but collaborate amongst elementary schools and both middle schools. And then to have one high school was just, it was a very, very special time and felt like everyone was coming together and really aligning in a way that we've been working towards. And finally, our students are also really busy. And so if you recall, Brian Peliquin and Adrian Turner used to come present in this presentation, but we've decided they'll come to a couple work-study sessions during the year, so it can be more in-depth. But I wanted to bring some stats for you, because there's so much to celebrate. And so Brian put together stats for me for student activities when we, now that we've finished the 23-24 school year, and I'm going to share them with you. 1,179 students participated in Minnesota State High School League sports. 299 students participated in fine arts. 355 students participated in non-Minnesota State High School League activities and sports. We had four teams go to state, boys cross-country, girls soccer, girls basketball, and boys hockey. We had individuals make it to state in the following sports: girls cross-country, girls swim and dive, wrestling, gymnastic, boys swim and dive, boys track, girls track, boys golf, and girls golf. Our fall musical earned its highest rating ever from the Hannipin Theater Trust Spotlight and performed their showcase in the spring. We had two members of the speech team, Mariam and Sanu, won not only the Minnesota State High School League speech contest, but also the national contest. And we had two coaches inducted into their Coaches Hall of Fame, Jeremy Post and Dan Kavashchek. I would say last year was an awfully successful year. And so for this year in the fall, we have, over the summer, we had 279 students participate in summer strength and conditioning. And we have 537 students participating in fall Minnesota State High School League sports. That's the highest rate of participation since before COVID. And so we continue to lean in and how do we have our students connected? Not only, we obviously focus on their academic achievement, but how are they really feeling successful, connected, on what Lydia just talked about, all the different ways to get involved. And so a shout out to all their coaches, the staff, families, and community members who continue to support them. So now I will introduce Jen Babish, who is our Director of Teaching and Learning, who will talk. So each one of the directors will talk more in depth about the work they led this summer.
Good evening. I'd like to continue to highlight our students. This summer, we had 21 students in career pathways participate in summer internships and jobs. And you'll see here from the pictures, one thing I wanted to highlight was our Minnesota Trades Academy. We had 11 students from mid-June to mid-August participate in a paid summer construction internship experience, where four days a week, they worked. And one of those days was shadowing an apprentice, and then they'd go back to the construction career pathway space at the high school and practice their skills and learning that they learned during the apprentice days. So we're super excited. This has been an ongoing summer opportunity for our students that I wanted to highlight. And then also, we had, we welcomed over 50 new educators. I think it's about, we probably had about 40 last year, so about 10 new educators to White Bear Lake area schools. And our theme was "Proud to be a Bear." And we spent the time, the educators spent time in their respective buildings with mentors, instructional coaches, and the principals. Our new educators also heard from district leadership around the importance of building relationships, partnering together, and embracing change. All right, and I'd like to introduce our Director of Student Support Services, Lisa Orin.
Good evening. So this summer, our Transition Education Center shifted to the Hugo Elementary, and our young adults are so excited to have that access to that expanded space. They have beautiful outdoor areas, as well as the indoor gym and lunchroom. And so they had an open house just last week, and it was well-attended by parents and our young adults. And so that's one of the things that we're really excited about this school year. And then last year, we added a family engagement teacher to our earliest learners in early childhood, and she held monthly parent groups called the Little Bears Club, or the Little Bears Group. And they met every month around topics that they were interested in. And we're really excited about this, because it culminated at the end of the school year, where all the parents came with their children and met with the teachers. And they really appreciated the fact that they could put input into some of the topics that they wanted to talk through, as well as just making those collaboration and relationships with families right when they're starting their career in special education. So some of those are some of the things that we did over the summer. And I would like to introduce our Educational Equity and Achievement Director, Brenton.
Good evening. So I just wanted to start really quick, just to, with our new employee inductions that we had. We really focused on three areas during there, and that was with our Indian Ed, our equity decision-making protocol, and racial biased harm protocol as well, and family engagement, along with our MTSS processes, were the three bucket areas that we chose to address with our new teachers and staff. One of the things that we did talk with them about this, I really enjoy this slide, as I really talk about the differences between equality, diversity, equity, acceptance, and belonging. So regardless of the amount of melanin that your body produces, we really want to make sure that our department focuses on everybody and really addresses that. So I'm not a shoe guy, because I'm cheap, but if I was, this is what I would go with. So we really wanted to talk about equality is everything, is everyone getting a pair of shoes? Diversity is everyone getting a different type of shoe? Equity is everyone getting a pair of shoes that fits? Acceptance is understanding we all wear different kinds of shoes. And belonging is wearing the shoes that you want without the fear of judgment. Over the summer, myself, along with Vincent Patton, who is our Indian Ed Coordinator, we put together a professional development opportunity for all staff members to take in our district, which was our Historical Trauma PD. As of 3 something this afternoon, 3:30, approximately 45, between 45 and 50% of the district staff have taken and completed and passed the quiz that goes along with that PD, which is awesome. They have, we requested that they all take it before September 30th. So we're well on the way with that as well. And that, I must say, actually came as a result of our non-concurrence with our APAC committee. So that was one of the requests that they asked, that we have all staff members participate in that. And so one of the last slides I have here is that the Ready-for-School event that took place a couple weeks before our students returned at the new high school, which was awesome. A few key points. I do want to thank Brianna Santos-Coy, our Family Engagement Coordinator, as well as everyone else who volunteered their time and efforts to make this event an amazing opportunity for our community. 400-plus backpacks and supplies were distributed to families that day. 100-plus families had access to Parent View and applied for educational benefits with assistance from interpreters who were there to provide their support, as well as our IT department, making sure that they had access and capabilities. Bear Care Clinic was also present and scheduled appointments for physicals and vaccines, as well as community Ed sharing their resources and programming and early childhood opportunities. So I know that's a short list, but I really want to thank everyone that took place, took a part of that. It was an amazing event. And the whole time, I kept telling myself, "Brenton, take pictures. Brenton, take pictures." I took one, and that's the picture. So we love Juan. Juan is at the tech campus now. He's amazing, and his mom. So it was great. So anyway, at this time, I would like to introduce our Technology and Innovations Director, Susan Hedder.
Thank you. I would also like to start by recognizing our students from Tech Depot. We had 25 students who worked all summer to help us get ready, including the day after school let out, to come in and help us move all of the technology out of the sites that we're having construction as quickly as possible. And then getting everything back into place in time for school to start and for teachers to have everything they need. The work couldn't have been done without the work of the tech team and the 25 students in Tech Depot. And again, we were so busy. Brenton is one picture ahead of us. We didn't even get a picture of the students working. That's how busy it was. They also were, they worked on getting 1,400 Chromebooks ready for the students coming back, the ninth graders, sixth graders, and all of our new students. This included unboxing everyone. They had to personally touch each one, log into them, make sure they were connecting. And they had that done within a week. We were shocked. There was no way we could have done that without their help. We also worked on the repurposed Chromebooks, as well as continuing to work on deploying some new desktops to our staff. Additionally, as you can imagine, with the introduction of two new sites, new buildings, we had to migrate all of our information from Sunrise to Mariner, and then to combine the high school data. So our teams, our systems applications teams worked hard all summer to make sure all of that information was accurate in all of our systems. It's a large piece of work to do that, and I'm very impressed with the speed at which they got that completed. Additionally, we moved our library system, Destiny, into the cloud for more reliability and also to be able to provide better support for our staff and students. Other pieces include synergy, and again, creating two new sites there, but we're on the latest update. And we're continuing to implement new features that will help our staff and our parents and our students have better information. So a couple of the features are hall pass, where students will be able to basically create a hall pass within student view. The teachers will see that. We can get better information on when students are out of class and how long they are. Additionally, tardy kiosk should help at the high school with students using their badge in order to badge into school when they're late. And again, we're going to get better information from that that we can share with families. And additionally, we set up standards-based grading for the high schools. For cybersecurity, we began a partnership with Arctic Wolf, which is going to help us with our managed security system. They'll be providing us with that protection. We want to make sure all of our student data is safe, and this is the next step for us as we work towards really improving our cybersecurity stance. We continue cybersecurity education for staff, including phishing simulations, as well as just general knowledge around password security and other pieces. And then lastly, we revisited the technician support model. Last year, we moved to a shared team of North and South. And after getting feedback and upon reflection of how well that worked, we divided the district into thirds, and there's a team of two Tier One techs that are working at each of those. What we hope from that is that those teams of two can build relationships within those buildings and with each other in order for us to better support those sites. Thank you. Operations is next.
Good evening. Facilities has been, you know, working at a frantic clip all summer long. We've had a lot going on across the district. We had several big moves that had to happen before we could do anything. So all of our South Campus staff and their supplies and equipment had to move to the high school. All of our Sunrise Park staff and supplies had to move to Mariner. And then tech had to move to Hugo Elementary. All of that had to happen within about 72 hours. So thank you to our custodian team, who worked really, really hard to make that happen, and Kevin Fernandez, Kalina Moll, their whole team. Outstanding work getting that move to occur in a very short amount of time, because construction doesn't wait. So we had multiple big projects at Mariner Middle School. They had Phase 1 of a two-phase project on their HVAC. And so we ripped that apart, and that will be completed again next summer. And then we'll wrap things up and be done at Mariner. At the high school, that's been in continuous construction, of course, for years, but we completed Phase 3, and we are almost done with the high school. Just a little bit of work to do. But as Wayne mentioned early, a historic day as we reopen that after 41 years, we reopened it as a 912 high school. Central Middle School, we took a three years of summer construction, decided to compress it into two. And so this past summer and next summer, very intense summers at Central, but the payoff would be they won't have a third year of it. So thanks to that team, they've been very patient. They had, almost like moving out, they had to pack everything up for the construction this summer. But we'll see a great, beautiful new gym at Central that has now, is now being used. Some wonderful flexible spaces that have been opened up in that, in that building that's from the 50s. And so it's very traditional, but now has some wonderful flexible spaces. And they're probably already enjoying the HVAC improvements in most of that building. Vadis Heights, we put a new roof on the north half of the building that will allow the solar panels to be installed next summer. I mentioned that tech moved into their space and in the final phases of the Monument Sign Project. Projects currently underway, the Performing Arts Center will be opened. That will be completed end of November. We have some concerts that'll be performed there in December that we'll look forward to as we christen that new space. Price Field, some improvements just to the throwing area on the north side of Price Field. And then Sunrise Park, that construction has begun, and the district office staff will be moving out and out of current building into the Sunrise Park Center in January, along with the school board. And then again, the solar projects at the high school and at Vadis. Security upgrades continue across the district. Integration of the lockdown system with the building is an important part of it. That blue lockdown button or red lockdown button that you see in that top photo, those exist across the school district and places where people can lock down a building just with the push of a button. And so the integration is getting doors to close and secure that building as they do that. Security cameras are continuing to get improved across the school district, especially in some outside spaces and where we improve buildings, like at Central Middle School, creating flex spaces, create some voids. There are some areas that need additional cameras, so we're continuing those improvements. The Threat Assessment Protocol, we've been working with our building leaders and our student support staff on recognizing potential threats in the building. And so those individuals were trained in the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines, and will continue to, or those staff will be using those protocols this year to recognize threats in the building and as a way to keep ourselves safe. And then standard reunification method, we're working with the county on countywide processes. Nutrition Services Department also had a busy summer. Served nearly 10,000 breakfasts this summer and 14,000 lunches. We're in year We're in year two now, once school starts, of the free meal program, free breakfast, free lunch. It will continue, gladly continue that program. The Farm-to-School Institute is a professional development process for some of our nutrition leaders, but it also then was, allows us to, to build sustainable farm-to-school programs that support Minnesota's food system in collaboration with MDE and University of Minnesota Extension Program. One way that we saw that in action was at Freedom School this summer, where our nutrition staff read to students, but they also brought them on a field trip to Marina on St. Croix, where they got to visit one of the food providers for their program. If you were at any open houses, you enjoyed some local apples from Pine Tree, that was part of that program. And we'll learn more about that as the year moves on. The Bulk Milk Initiative is kind of school, or cool, we have about five schools now that have bulk milk being served. Kids tell us the taste is better. But importantly, it's keeping milk cartons out of landfills. Just at Unique Elementary, in the first four days of school, they kept more than a thousand cartons out of landfills. So, multiply that over many buildings, over many days. It's significant. Sixty percent less milk waste, and on average, students were consuming an additional ounce of milk with each lunch. So, successful program. And wellness programming is continuing with the Wellness Committee, working with each building to promote wellness activities across the district. Transportation is always a challenging start to the school year. They work hard to get the routes figured out, and then they get hundreds of changes in seventy-two hours before school starts. And so, that can, that can create some challenges for them. But they've been doing lots of tweaking on routes, making things run more smoothly. They'll continue to tweak those over the next week or two. And we appreciate our students and parents for their patience, as there's been some challenges with transportation along the way. Hiring drivers has been a challenge for school districts across the nation. In White Bear Lake, we're fortunate, we are fully staffed with drivers and bus aides. But that's not true of all of our contractors, and so in those areas, we have, we have some challenges. What we have been able to do is take some routes back to the district offering routes, having less with contractors. Buses are going to drive about almost a million and a half miles this year, make over half a million stops. There's a lot of moving parts in the transportation department, so we thank them. And we'll turn it over to Human Resources.
So, as Allison had stated, the summer can be one of our busiest months, and in the HR Department, it really is. Those are our busiest months of the year there. So, we hired over a hundred and thirty new employees, sixty-one of which were new teachers, which is about kind of par for the course for us. That was in addition to all of the seasonal employees that were hired to support our programming during the summer, and all of the contracts that are changed to bring employees in to extend their employment for the summer. So, a huge thanks to my staff to get us to this point, long days, long hours. So, it's always greatly appreciated every year here. You know, we'll, you'll notice on the next slide, it is going to be our ever-present "We're Hiring" slide, but what I can tell you is, we're really in a very envious position, because with the unemployment rate looking the way that it does in the Twin Cities, you know, there's a fierce competition for employees as we're looking to fill positions. And really, in all of our departments, although we are still hiring in a few right now, if you took a snapshot, at some point in the summer, we were really staffed for the year. So, the hiring that we're doing is just that kind of continuous hiring as people are coming, going, moving through, you know, their journey. So, that's what that looks like, but we're really in a very good place that way. So, another note that I want to just quickly make is that last year, we moved to a new substitute management partner. And in each month last year, we saw at least a double-digit increase in our fill rate after making that move to collaborate with teachers on call. So, that's been highly successful. That said, there's still a lot of stress, you know, in buildings, trying to fill those positions. And so, it hasn't, you know, eliminated the struggle that really every district deals with. However, it has been a significant improvement for us. So, just wanted to give you that brief update. Another point here, too, is that later on, I'll be asking for your approval of a tentative agreement with our extended-day staff, and that will wrap up our bargaining cycle here for a two-year period. So, we're excited to move into a year here where we can concentrate on some other items as we move into things. So, we're excited there. Not necessarily the sexiest of bullet points, but we have converted files to a digital format, which has been a Herculean, three-year task, as our staff has gone through that process without bringing on additional staffing. And what it's really going to allow us to do is just efficiency for us, but it's also going to transfer to all of our employees to, in that they're going to be able to get access to documents far more quickly than they've been able to, and just generally get their questions, you know, answered a little bit more easily. So, that's been a really great thing. And again, a huge thanks to my staff, as they've worked over a very long time to make the magic happen. As I said, we are hiring in a number of areas, especially still in extended day, nutrition services to some extent. We're always looking on the bus driver front, and we're going to continue to get out into the community to the extent possible, to make sure that people are aware of those opportunities. But we really are in pretty darn good shape. And like I said, really an enviable position compared to a lot of my colleagues that I'm speaking to in surrounding districts. So, we're feeling pretty good about where we are at the moment. Any questions? Yes.
Ms. Daniels.
We still hire some building substitutes within, that have contracts with us that we don't use the service for?
Yes, we do. So, we do that, and there's a couple of nice things. Number one, that's really helpful. It, it's been, you know, a great service to our students, really, because there's some really committed core substitutes there. It also really helps us bring on, it helps us really in attracting sometimes more talented or just get bigger pools of long-term substitutes as well, because we can augment a partial year with that building substitute role, where they really know what they're going to be stepping into and know that they're going to be employed for a year. So, it's been terrific from that standpoint, too. They can get to know students before stepping into a long-term sub, for instance, or they're familiar with students when they get done with a long-term sub role and are able to still be a part of that building and the culture there. So, that's been a huge benefit for us. No other questions, then I'll step aside, and Tim Maurer will come up to present for Community Services.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Chair. Also, members of the board, it's a great day to be here, not because we get to be here in front of you guys, but today's one of my favorite days where we got to welcome our littlest learners, our early childhood kids, up to our early childhood program today. And it's just, it's one of my favorite mornings, watching the kids either get off the bus or a parent drop off, and, you know, parents trusting us with their littlest learners coming in for the first time, making a good impression with them, and, and making sure that they have a great first day. And the three sites that I went to today was literally all smiles. Every kid was happy to go meet with their classmates and be with their teachers, zero tears, which I think is probably a first for me. There's usually a couple that don't want to leave mom and dad, but it just goes to show all the work that leads up to the school year, open houses, making those connections with families and with those kids that are, that our teachers and our staff do a really great job, making sure parents know what to expect when they come in, and kids are coming in confident, happy, and fun, and ready for a fun time. But as we kind of look through the slides and some of the data, just a reminder, you know, our early childhood program has, we have full and half-day and different options for programs across the district at Normandy Park and our six out of our nine elementaries, and Tamarack Nature Center. A nice variety to meet families where they're at, that meets what their current needs are or wants are for their children in early childhood. And it's not just early childhood. I think it's also important to remember that we serve, you know, ECFE programs and new parents with birth to two, and then as they grow into be three and five into our programs. But we also work with them through home visiting, community outreach, provide family classes and our parent classes, offer activities, and seek to build home and school partnerships to support families into the future as they continue to grow in our community. And we work really hard to help families connect with one another and with our schools right away through our early childhood program. Numbers up there, so we're a little south from where we started last year. But I think an important thing to take into place here, we have a, a number of students in our ECSE program that are still going through evaluations. We have a small waitlist at two sites on the south end, at Badness and currently at Badness and Lake Ayres, that we're working through right now to work through the details of transportation and other pieces to offer another section. When those are completed and that section gets added, we'll be right about where we started last year at, and phone calls do keep coming in. It is a moving target day to day. So, we're very hopeful that we'll get those details ironed out here soon and can reach out to those few families on our waitlist to offer that new section and get them in our buildings as soon as we possibly can. A lot of the, we still have a little bit of space, a lot of our sections on the positive side are really almost full, like across the board. We don't, I don't think any one of our sections across our programs has maybe more than three spots left in them, so, and that's only at a handful of spots. So, we're, we're getting close, but we're definitely meeting the need. And like I said, once that additional section gets added, once we work through those, we'll alleviate that waitlist to make sure we still have a little bit of room for any new families that might be looking for additional early childhood programming. We did bring in some new leadership, you know, Darcy Rodriguez took a new job outside of the district late last year. So, we welcomed Kristin Nelson, our new Assistant Director of Early Childhood Programs to the district. She started over the summer. Just a big thank you to our leadership at Normandy Park and the front office team there, welcoming her in, getting her grounded as she starts off the school year, really just a supportive culture we have there, and then she's felt that. And it's been very, very nice as she leads into this first, first week of programming with students. And then moving on, our Out of School Times programs, you know, as we talked about staffing and hiring, we are still with the waitlist, but I think it's important to look at how far we've come since last year. When you look at the data and all the work, the hard work that our Out of School Time staff continues to do on a daily basis of interviewing and making hires and bringing new people into our programs. Last year, we were just shy of four hundred students on a waitlist. This year, right now, we're around one-seventy-five, one-hundred-and-eighty. And again, that is a moving target. We get new calls every day of people that either want care or plans have changed and they're looking to not need it or made different arrangements. But the amount of new students that we're serving to, it increased from last year, from, you know, starting the year last year at seven-hundred-and-fifty-three students to starting this year, just under nine-hundred. So, significant need and increase met throughout our buildings. And again, we're still working hard to work with our Radar Solutions, who's been a really great partner with us, and finding staff and helping us get to the point where we can hopefully see down the road here, a future of alleviating our waitlist across the board for that as we go. But, you know, as Matt, as Matt mentioned earlier, too, we do, this is the time of year, too, and we get into buildings and people get offered other positions, and they make connections in the buildings, and they take a different job either within the building or a different opportunity. So, it is, you know, we deal a lot of movement within those positions as well that we navigate. So, kudos to our Out of School Time and Extended Day teams to work through those and continue to offer the care that they do for all of our families and students that need it. And we are continuing to partner positions with our school day hours. You know, we always look to partner with Nutrition Services or at the building level with, you know, lunch positions or recess positions, and what can we do to create a more robust opportunity for someone who's looking to work within White Bear Lake area schools, and what we can do to provide a more, again, robust position to attract new people to work with us and, and, you know, make connections with our kids and see them throughout the year. Another way we're doing that, too, is also continuing to work with our high school for credit, high school credit, students that are in there for early release and working with local companies to help our high-volume recruiting efforts. And all have been very helpful. And our, our staff continues to grow because of that. And again, but we're just trying to meet the need that's out there in the community. And again, we wish we didn't have a waitlist, but the jump from last year to this year is significant data to show that we're moving in the right direction and doing what we can to meet that need. And just for youth enrichment offerings up there, I think it's important just to show the amount of offerings we're looking to increase from not only over the summer, but then into the fall, and really doing what we can to balance those across our buildings so every family, no matter what school or school boundary you're living in, has some type of opportunity or access to an enrichment opportunity after school through our Youth Enrichment and Development Program as well. And then a little piece from over the summer, our Targeted Services Program, Summer School Program served over four hundred kids on our program this summer. Another, you know, to show the increase in staffing, summer, we had a fifty-five contracts increase from the previous summer, but no waitlist over the summer. And currently, looking to partner positions with school day hours, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong slide. Sorry about that. With our Targeted Services Program over the summer, again, our, a lot of those were held at Matoska Elementary and some other schools for the summer, but over four hundred kids across our three programs here for the summer, and add an additional one-hundred-and-twenty for those that we served over at Freedom Schools down at Willow Lane Elementary, a really fun and busy summer. Like, it was a lot of fun and really busy, but like the amount of work put into that and opportunities for kids to enhance and not, you know, try to prevent that summer learning loss for parents who are looking for that for their child and create those opportunities through different topics. So, in Camp Summer, they use topics of Create Your Own Business, nature, Pokemon, Steam, game design, mindfulness, cooking, and other options. The curriculum that we use for our Camp Summer Program really allows teachers to, you know, take an adventure with those students through that curriculum, through a different area or topic that might speak to that kid. So, if I, you know, if my kid loves Pokemon, then I can explore math or different subject matter and those things through the world of Pokemon and kind of create that connection with those students. And a huge thank you to many of our local businesses and vendors, you know, we get a lot of help from our community across the district, but we had a lot of people who donated supplies for our Olympics Day and on the last day of middle school at Summer U. And then an exciting, I think we shared at the end of the school year last year, but we were very fortunate enough to be awarded an After School Community Learning Grant. And that work started off right away this summer, so it was a really quick turnaround. You know, Nicole Oswald and her team and leadership team with, in collaboration with teaching and learning, the, what we had to require, the minimum number of hours for programming to meet the grant needs, had to increase what we currently had in place. So, we had to add an hour or an hour and a half after the normal day for what we had originally planned and kind of speed that up for the summer to, to meet the needs for that grant. But they, again, working with community partners and looking with other organizations around to provide those opportunities. Students had a lot of fun at their camps, and they got to explore the great outdoors by fishing, learning to kayak, learning about careers, and meeting community members in those positions, and spending extra time exploring Creative STEM projects and engaging in sports and games at a soccer camp as well. So, a lot of those things, seems like we do kind of all the time in the work that we do in Community Services and Community Ed, but to be able to organize that in collaboration with what we currently had in place for Summer U and Camp Summer for the summer to go is, again, no easy feat. So, hats off to our staff to pull that off. And the grant positively impacted us, of course, and with Freedom Schools directly, we were able to increase the number of seats offered in that program over the summer to be able to get more kids in that program. So, we originally had been approved for a hundred, and then with the original, with the support from the grant, we were able to expand that to a hundred-and-twenty. And looking forward to do that for the upcoming years as well, or upcoming seasons here as well. And we'll get more information to you guys about that grant as the school year goes. Right now, we're in the middle of getting our school year plans approved, and we'll be looking to start those up with our, the four schools that were approved for that were at Lake Ayres, Birch, Willow, and Badness. So, Nicole is working with those four principals and team leadership and teaching and learning to work through those work plans leading up as we get ramped up here for later in October for those things to start. And those will provide free enrichment opportunities for qualifying students that are looking to, you know, that need some support and academic support through students, or Targeted Youth rec and middle school activities, yeah, kicking off here for the fall. You know, the numbers are, you know, we are very busy in the summertime with all that we do with our camps, clinics, rec sports, and everything, and that kind of bleeds into the fall as well. So, our, our numbers are really fantastic for our youth sports and rec sports for the fall. We have over four hundred kids participating in our soccer program that serves pre-K through fourth grade. And then our flag football program, that's kindergarten through fifth grade, we have over three hundred kids right now playing football. So, if you're driving around the fields at night here or on the weekends, you'll see kids playing around flag football. And then for grades three through six, for our rec volleyball program, we have just over a hundred-and-fifty students participating in that as well. And that all, of course, you know, we can't do what we do in that area without the volunteers of our parents and community members who want to volunteer their time and coach for our team, so we're very thankful for that. So we're very thankful for that. And our registration for our winter rec basketball league is also open at this time. Middle school athletics is off and running as well. We have cross country, girls tennis, volleyball, and then new this year, we have offered soccer after school as well. So right now, we have 20 kids that are currently registered for middle school soccer, which is great because we know like it was in our fall catalog that hit homes in August, but you know, we all know parents are busy and likely middle school kids. I know I didn't, I wouldn't look at things until school started, but yeah, we had, I think we had four or five registered as of like the first day of school and now we're up to 20 and expecting to still take on more. And again, just looking to expand what we can offer to our middle school students and families and really that's about building, you know, it's building connections and that positive relationship with school and that strong community support, but also that, that school pride and that being a bear, right? I just wanted to show up here for, you know, if you want to play good, you got to look good, right? So we did put some money into some new uniforms for our middle school volleyball teams this year. Historically, we've used rec shirts and, and other shirts like that, but we said, no, it's time to really start, let's get the, let's get our girls volleyball team some nice uniforms to wear for the summer to really feel like a, a team and, and looking good. So those are just the snapshots. We have, I don't know which color is for which school, but we have gray and we have black that are for Central and Mariner middle schools this year. So that in collaboration with our intermural programs we're offering, again, we have fall intermurals, we have our ultimate frisbee program going on right now. We usually, like we get, we're serving 20 to 30 some students in that program too. Then looking to expand on that to begin, provide that variety of student activities after school that meets them where they're at. If they want to compete at a different level or a more casual intermural program, different costs associated with that, that gives kids more opportunities to try different activities and, and be a part of different teams and programs. So. And working our way up here, our adult programs and facility use, you know, you can look at the data that's on the board, but I mean, really when you take a step back and think about all we do in adult enrichment and adult disabilities, adult education and our senior program, we really are focused on creating opportunities and for, for adults in our community to explore their interests and passions and that personal growth with whatever that passion or hobby may be, health and wellness. But most importantly, it's, it's building that human connection and community, right? Creating opportunities for people to connect with each other around a shared topic or a hobby. We're just very proud of the work that we're doing, not only for our students, but especially for our adults and expanded community in our area and what we're able to offer. And pictured there to the right, they wanted to give a shout out, that gentleman's name is Mike Paulson. Mike worked, he was awarded a grand champion for his work that he's holding up there at the Washington County Fair. So they just wanted to give him a little, little props there for the work that he did and his, his purple ribbon there. So, you know, kudos to Mike for the, for the awesome artwork that he did there to, to become a grand champion at the fair. And again, we, hats off and we appreciate all the community support we continue to get for our Meals on Wheels program. Again, we can't help serve the community members in need for that, for just a daily meal and food without the, you know, consistent volunteer drivers and people that work within that area to give people a meal every single day throughout that program. And just publications which you have likely seen in your home or online, but this is just a snapshot here. So our big fall catalog that hit homes mid-August, I'm sure many of you have seen that or they're in our buildings or likely in your homes. It's a seasonal catalog that comes to your door three times a year. In addition to that, we also have our, the Voice, which is our senior publication that goes out quarterly as well for our older adults. And then above that is our Community Bridge Consortium brochure that goes out to our, and available to our stu-, our, excuse me, adults with disabilities and creating opportunities for different activities, games, events and collaboration with our neighboring districts and cities as well. And there's our, our early childhood registration guide, ECFE registration guides, again, that you see likely in all the front offices across all of our buildings. So different ways to get in touch with us and to get any information on what we might have going on. So please take a look at those and our website. And then the last big plug, our first community event kicking off this year is our Bear Bike Ride. We're switching it up a little bit this year and we're really excited about it. So the last three years, this has been in place. We've done that, it's mainly just been adults and every now and then we'd get a student involved in that for either a 25 mile or 50 mile bike ride. Money raised stays with us and supports financial assistance and scholarships for students that want to participate in any youth enrichment or rec program, sport activity that just needs a little bit of financial help. Money raised for that goes to support those students and families in need for that. This year, we wanted to, to expand that a little bit and make it a broader community event. So we're working in collaboration with the high school to offer this at the tail end of homecoming week on the Saturday morning, October 12th, after the homecoming game. So in addition to those 20, if you're a serious bike rider and you want to go on that 25 or 50 mile route, I will wave to you as you start riding away. You want to see me on that route. But in addition to that, this year, we're excited, we're, we're starting from the high school. We will have a nine mile route that'll leave the high school and go around Bald Eagle. It's about 9.2. They wouldn't let me call it a 10. I really wanted to call it a 10 mile route, but they said, nope, it's 9.2. So a nice, fairly, you know, student friendly, family friendly, nine mile route around the lake. But even for our younger riders or a family event that just want to get students out and families outside and come see our spaces, we're going to have a fun little route around Central and the high school campus as well. So there'll be Stagerd start times, more information can be found there. It is free to attend. It is free to ride. We are asking those that have the ability to, to, there are different suggested donations amount, donation amounts when you register. But again, we just want people there. We want people to come, check out our spaces, be a part of the event, make a connection with somebody and go ride some bikes that day. And if you're in a position to make one of those suggested donations, we really, really appreciate it. It does go a long way to help a lot of families and students that need to, to get an activity or a sport or enrichment class after school. And if you want something to take home, we will be working with our friends down at Revolution Sports. We have some tailored quarter zips that any participant that donates $50 or more to participate will be able to take home a quarter zip home with them as well. So just know that going forward, but we hope to see you guys all there. Even if you don't want to ride, come applaud and cheer on people that are riding and just come out and hang out for a little while. But it'll start around nine for that 50 mile, 25 mile ride and then we'll ask the younger riders to show up there around 11 and try to wrap things up between 12 and 1. So it'd be a nice way to wrap up homecoming. So, all right. Any questions on anything? All right, then I'm going to pass it over to Marissa Vetti with Community Relations.
And Communications. Hello, everybody. I'm your second to last presentation here. And so again, I'm Marissa Vetti, the communications director. And every year I get to come up here and really celebrate all of the wonderful things that are happening and that's what we get to do in the communications office every day as well. Really making sure that we can inform people what is happening so that, obviously so that they're aware of it, they can be proud of it, and then they can engage with us in the different opportunities as well. So we will start, and again, we have many different activities that we're focused on and, and many different projects that we're working on throughout the summer as well. So this is a snapshot of a few of, few of our favorites or a few of the ones that you might recognize the most. So the first one would be our printed calendar, which is mailed to all of our families and is available to those who might want to pick it up at district offices as well. And I will share that this is something, a printed calendar is sort of gone by the wayside and we've been told by our community, this cannot go to the wayside because this is what we look forward to. We have people who are calling us in June, asking, when is the calendar? And we can't put it together until all of the events, of course, are finalized. But that's been really fun. And even not too long ago, I had somebody who had written in and said, I'm looking for the calendar, is it coming soon? We have a tradition, it goes right on our refrigerator. And so there's nothing more heartwarming for me to hear that the, the beautiful photos that we're able to take at the events throughout the year and in the classrooms and on the, you know, playgrounds that they're being enjoyed and really making a difference for families. And I know they're, you know, going through the pages, trying to see who they know, which is always a really fun tradition, I think, for our families. So in addition to that, of course, we were working on updating the website of you've, we've covered the different changes that have happened throughout the district. So it was working on those changes in addition to, once again, hosting the back to school page, trying to be a one stop shop for families. We're trying to figure out, you know, what is the school supply list going to look like? When do I go back to school with Stagerd starts and that? So we did offer that and host that again for this year. In addition to, of course, the, the annual updates and the even more robust annual updates that we worked on this year. The beginning of the year, of course, is a time for us to reach out to families. So of course, Dr. K did an electronic letter to our, our staff members and then we also did a printed letter to our families as well. We had an English version and then those families who speak Spanish did receive an English and a Spanish version of that same letter. It also includes important information about our, our media release and, and other information that we wanted families to have, a tangible piece of paper telling them important updates. And then they'll hear it in other ways, of course, as well. We also get to work with different departments throughout the district to help them get their messages out. And so once again, this year, we got to work with the nutrition services department. So if any of you have little ones in your homes, you probably remember getting a postcard and that was really fun for us to work with them on a couple of years ago to launch this. You know, the practice year pin and we, we heard from families that their students were literally in that upper corner of that postcard, doing a practice run before they would, would come into school. So that's again, heartwarming. It's, it's nice to hear the, the feedback, that what we brainstormed and what we've worked on to help serve the community is, is indeed working. And then school videos, these are just a few of them that we, we got to work on this year. Video isn't always the avenue to get information out, but in a few, in a few ways, it absolutely is. So you can see the, the samples we've got here. We helped the high school with a traffic video, so really helping families and helping students understand, you go in this way, you park in this lot and here's how you leave and the buses are going to do this and get, you know, stay, stay in your lane, literally and figuratively. And so we, we worked with them on that. And then we introduced two of our new school leaders for our ALC and for the high school. So that was a fun one to work on as well. And then Bear did visit some of our building leaders and pulled together a go video. So it was go do all sorts of wonderful things and you probably saw it, we shared it as the e-newsletter, video edition a couple of Sundays ago. And then of course, ending with the Go Bears because we wouldn't do it any other way, I think. And then for convocation, again, back to, to Dr. K, part of his letter was inviting our staff members back to join us for convocation. We were out in the stadium outdoors again for this year. We had some incredible visitors, which was amazing. We had Willie Jett join us from the Department of Ed. We had somebody that I think is a favorite of probably all of us, Jim Galvin was there as well. And then Dr. K gave his, gave his speech and, or connected with us. And then we had student, student participants as well. So that was a really fun way to kick off the year. And then of course, for people to go into the high school and check it out if they hadn't been there already. Something that our office facilitated with the help, of course, of our families and community members was the back to school bears, hashtag back to school bears. And so the e-newsletter that we sent out last night had a collage of photos that people had turned in. That was our K through 12 plus students, photos that families had turned in and, or a sampling of that. And then we hope that this week, our early childhood families will be doing the same so that we can do a similar, a similar collage coming up as well. So that's always a fun way to, to come back into the school year and, and be excited about it with the community. Additionally, our regular communication channels that we have been using during the summertime, we slow down a little bit with them and then in August, we ramp right back up. So our community e-newsletters, we, families have already begun, begun receiving and will continue to get a weekly e-newsletter, either a video edition or a text edition on Sunday evenings to start their week out. And then we've got our 624 facts on social media, so Facebook and Instagram at 6:24 AM, as Dr. K mentioned in his superintendent's report. And then our weekend 62.4 seconds as well. We got to launch that last Friday because we finally had a week back with the students, which was amazing. So families and community members and students, of course, and staff can enjoy those throughout the year as well on Fridays. And then last but not least, we have communications trainings just for our staff members. So we did do something with our leaders and then we'll continue to, to offer just nuggets of information so that obviously it is a goal that we have, the district wide communications happening as well, but that the communications and engagement with our building leaders and our teachers and that, that that can really be a robust way and that people can feel like and can, can be served by good communications that is happening through the schools and the district and the classrooms. So that is it. And with that, I'll turn back over and you'll get a bit of an enrollment update from Mr. Tim Wall. Thank you.
Okay, always at this first board meeting in September, we give an update of where we are at the beginning of the school year for enrollment. So we'll look first at elementary and most of our elementary schools are within just a few students of where they were last year, with the exception of one, and that's Matoska's at minus 56. And oddly, that's a very small kindergarten class that came into Matoska this year. And as we started to register our kindergarten students this past winter, we discovered that there were many less siblings in this particular group than we've seen in the past. So that's kind of the outlier on that list. And so that leaves us at minus 44 at the elementary. Matoska also had a much larger fifth grade class leave last year than, you know, than they have this year. And so you put those two together and we end up with that number of minus 56, otherwise pretty stable at Matoska and all of our other elementary schools. So we start the year with 3,672 enrolled K-5. We look at secondary, things change quite a bit. The middle school's interesting. Mariner is up 103 students this year and Central's down a little bit. Recall that a year ago, we changed the attendance boundary and that last year didn't, had a smaller effect in that many of the students who were reassigned to the South Side, inter-district transferred into Central to stay there. This year, we saw much less of that. So more of those families who were in their second year assigned to Mariner, went to Mariner. We also saw a significant increase in the sixth grade cohort from what we had, from the number that we graduated in June to the 615 fifth graders. And we currently have 666 graders enrolled. So it's really significant jump in our sixth grade cohort and our seventh and eighth grade cohorts, both up as well. So at the middle school level, we're up 54 students at 1,886. At the high school level, our Unified High School is up 73 students this year. We saw at the ninth and 10th grade level, some increases in enrollment from last year's cohort. So we're seeing some open enrollment increases at the high school. Our ALC started a little smaller than it did last year and I think last year was a bit of an outlier at the ALC with 158 typically there in that 125 range to start. So I think we're probably getting closer to the norm this year at the Area Learning Center. And the transition education program expanded their programming a little bit to accept more students. So we see a little increase there. So our 912 total is a plus 61 students. The 612 total is 115. Then we have the, the minus 44 at the elementary school. So we're starting the school year with a K-12 total of 8,389 students and that's an increase of 71 over a year ago. Questions on that?
Ms. Drayfoje.
How does the current enrollment compare to pre-COVID enrollment numbers?
Um, you know, I should have looked at that, but it's pretty close to what, where we were. Yeah, a little bit lower. Yeah, we're still down a little bit. Yeah. Yeah, around, I think we were at 87 was our high watermark, 8,700, yeah. Okay, so there's one more, just a video here and I'm gonna get it started.
Drayful. Oh, wow, okay.
That's a wrap, yeah.
It's a lot. Any questions or comments from board members? Ms. Thompson.
I guess just a comment on the calendar. It is a very great thing in my, like I've got to August and then the, the week was almost, the month was almost done and I was like, I don't have my September, what are we going to do? I can't possibly put up a different calendar. So thankfully it came and then there was, you know, we didn't have a lapse in, in time there. So we didn't have to put up a different. in time there, so we didn't have to put up a different calendar. So I do, also, we greatly appreciate the calendars.
Ms. Bloyd.
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for all the work that happens during the summer that makes all of this happen, and we appreciate you.
Dr. Arcand.
She's got it.
Oh.
Thank you. I mean, yeah, it looks great, but we know that there was a lot of sweat and worry and hard work to get it all done, and so we appreciate it.
Yeah, I think it's really easy to kind of get stuck in your perspective, and like, where you are with your kids in the district, or wherever you live in the district. And to see all of this and to realize the diversity of programs and experiences is always a reset, I think, for all of us. And Dr. Newmaster.
I'd agree with what everyone said. It was amazing and cheerful, and the amount of effort and moving is what floored me, because I've moved schools and moved a library. But to move an entire district like that, I really think you needed a magic wand. I don't know how they did it, but I can imagine it was a lot of heavy work. So, and everyone who had to upend their cozy classroom where they'd been for years, perhaps, as joyful as they were to go to a new classroom, it's painful, and it's like, what do you take? What do you get rid of? And a whole new experience. And then you do the, I did three of the open houses, and it's just amazing all over. So I think it's a, joyful is a good word.
Well, thank you to everybody in this room and out of this room who did so much work to get ready for the school year. So we're going to move into our discussion items. Discussion item D1, the summary of the superintendent's evaluation, and this one is me. So the school board met with Superintendent Kazmercheck on August 26 to review his annual evaluation. Dr. Kazmercheck continues to meet the expectations of the school board in areas of leadership for continuous improvement of student achievement, communication, stakeholder involvement, fiscal responsibility, school facilities, and policy implementation and development. Superintendent Kazmercheck and the school board have established the following priorities for the 2024-2025 school year: strategic plan implementation, educational equity and academic achievement, change leadership and management, fiscal management, and facilities plan and implementation. The board would like to thank Dr. Kazmercheck and fellow cabinet members for their continued leadership during this really exciting time for our district. We had a great conversation about Dr. Kazmercheck's strengths and places for growth, and I think I can speak for the board that we're really fortunate to have you here. Do you want to give a speech, Wayne, or, okay?
[laughing]
All right. Then we will move into our second discussion item D2, the first reading of school board policies. For those who are new to this process, we do two readings of board policies. The first is we read through them as a board. We make any recommendations for changes or edits, and then they come to us again a second time for approval. So these are the policies coming before us for a first reading tonight, 507, 507.5, 532, 608, 616, 620, and 806. Board members, if you have any edits or changes, suggestions, please point out which policy and which page in the board packet. For those of you who haven't seen the board packet, if you haven't looked online, it's 429 pages long because of the, yeah, it's because of a lot of policies. So who has comments or questions?
First batch.
On the first read, yes. Okay. So then we, these will move to the October meeting for approval. Then we'll move into our operational items. E1, action on tentative agreement, 2023 to 25 fiscal year extended day staff. Mr. Bonds.
All right. So as I said, this is our last tentative agreement that I'm bringing before the board for this cycle. I'd like to say thank you to both the representatives from SEIU Local 284 for the bargaining unit, and also my cohort that worked on behalf of the district. And I'm pleased that we were able to get this done during the summer before we got into the school year here. So with that, I make the recommendation.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Bloyd, and a second?
Second.
A second by Dr. Newmaster. Any questions or comments? This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Bloyd.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Strifoggi.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcand.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you. And into our last operational item, E2, action on school board policies. So these 28 policies, and I just want to say thank you to the policy committee for, this is a lot of work, to review all of these policies. So to our board members and our staff, thank you for all this work. So these are due, had a first reading in August, 102, 204, 413, 416, 418, 425, 503, 506, 509, 512, 513, 515, 516, 521, 524, 535, 601, 603, 604, 609, 613, 615, 619, 624, 707, 708, 709, 802. That was one breath. All right. Who, does anybody have any questions? Please give me the policy and the page number. Dr. Newmaster.
There's one piece of policy 524. It's on page 346. And on reading them, I actually read them all again this time. And I started thinking more about cell phones as I'd been reading in the paper and everywhere else about it, too. And thought, you know, it might be a good idea to use a more general term, because we have Apple Watches and Fitbits that you can watch the game on and get messages on and send messages. And so maybe something, I have no problem with 524, but maybe we should use something like personal communication device, or, because it's not just cell phones. I mean, you can do anything. I know my brother and sister-in-law are always getting messages on their Fitbit. And I know the Apple phones that my kids have, my adult kids, are the same. You can leave your cellphone off the dinner table, but people are still checking their watches. So that just might be something to mention.
So are you thinking even in the title of the policy, so internet technologies and personal?
Communication.
Communication devices acceptable use?
Have to look it up, but I would say that would be a more inclusive title for the sort of thing we're looking at not being disrupting class for your dinner table. And then just use it, kind of like when they changed World's Best Workforce to a much better version, and just all the way through the policy changed the verbiage or the words.
Ms. Daniels.
I would agree with that. I work also with the 916 School Board, and we just had the same sort of discussion when we approved that policy, too, and it was going to go back to the committee, and they were going to make sure that the verbiage was a little bit expanded to make sure it covered all the communication devices that students may use in a classroom or may not be able to use at that time. So.
So would, the recommendation would be to remove 524 from this approval, and to go back to the policy committee for more edits, and then bring it back to us at the next board meeting? Is that the recommendation?
Otherwise, I think the policy was great.
Yeah. Dr. Kazmercheck?
Yeah.
Or Dr. Gillespie?
The only way to do it.
Do you want to comment on that, Dr. Gillespie? Yeah.
So if you look at, sorry, if you look at 2D on page one, it defines electronic technologies, and it refers to computers, peripherals, printers, telephones, and the applications they support or access. So I get that it's not specifically talking about Fitbits and all that. I, it's up to you guys what you want to do. However, for us, the policy absolutely covers what we need in the schools, and because cell phones have been such a topic, I, when we took it back, I would want to keep cell phones in there and then expand it. But we're still really working through some of those smartwatches, and they're not as prevalent right now in schools, and so they haven't impacted us. So I think it's an important conversation, but I feel like 2D and then the cell phones together really help us as we look at implementing practices in our schools.
Ms. Daniels.
I just was going to say, because you're the users of the policy and the people that have to implement it, and you know best, I would go with, you know, whatever.
Another approach might be to accept it as it is, but then get it back in line, so that we can start the year with an updated policy rather than pull it back. I think this is an important one that we have updated. And then, but then get it back in the hopper to review.
So what I'm going to recommend, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Strifoggi.
So is the recommendation that we ask kids to not have?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what, I mean, I get what the, I think I understand what the question is, you know, go back and review it, make sure other devices are covered. I think, I think that might take some time. I also think that starting the year with an updated policy like this would probably make a lot of sense rather than push this off. But then we can, we certainly can take the comments here and rework it and bring it down the road.
Thompson.
I just, I remember we kind of discussed this a little bit when we talked about this policy, and that you all felt comfortable with the way that it is addressed. And then just knowing kids today, yes, they may text, but rarely. They're not like us. They use Snapchat, they use other things. And I don't, I guess I know if you can access those on your Apple Watch if you had one, but I don't think it's the same kind of way of communicating that they do. And I guess I don't know how we would necessarily manage everybody's watches or Fitbit devices, but I know we had talked about it. I feel like one of us asked a question about that, and it was addressed in some of the other areas here.
Well, and I anticipate that we might have some updated language after we've had a year of really looking at our cellphone practices, that we realize, okay, we need this support from policy, or, and/or we see what other area districts have done with the legislation changes and their own policies. So we purposely kept it where we were making sure we were meeting the legislation, and then with the practices that I shared last work-study session on how we're handling it right now. But it will for sure continue to be a topic for us at leadership meetings.
Just thinking about technology, there could be something else that we don't even, haven't even heard of yet that you might want to, the second time around, add?
Yeah.
Because it might be available in six months that we haven't. So I like, I like Dr. Kaye's idea of approving it and then having it come around.
Getting it back in the list to be reviewed again. Yep.
So what I'm hearing is approve as is now, with the understanding that this will come back to us sooner rather than later, as we have time to assess how the policy is working and the procedures that go along with it.
Correct.
Dr. Newmaster.
And I think, too, as you have the discussion with your classroom, and I remember doing that in the media center with students and teachers talking about this, too, you have some ability to kind of explain a little bit more. It's the disruption, the distraction, and it could be many things, but the cellphone is ubiquitous. So it's there. So, I mean, I'd be comfortable, it's not written in stone, and lord knows tech has changed at a blinding speed. I'll have to ask my daughter tonight if she's doing all kinds of things with her Apple Watch. I don't know.
This is good conversation. Any other questions or comments about this policy or others? So what we're, we're gonna, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Bloyd.
If we put this back in the rotation, can we set a time potentially for the rotation? Because I think we actually need to go through this for a period of time to assess what's missing from it. Can we say next summer? Can we say after the fall semester?
So my anticipation was that if we needed anything, we would for sure have a semester under our belt, and then we would, you know, talk as administrators, check the data, and then, but otherwise bring it more, you know, in the summer for any updates that we have than we have a full year.
Okay.
But I'll bring it sooner if people are talking about it, for sure.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is that it's going to stay in for this round of approval. Thank you, Dr. Gillespie. All right. Any further comments or questions about any of these policies? All right. So the way we generally do this is we approve them in one fell swoop. So if I could get a motion to approve these 28 policies?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Arcand, and a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Thompson. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, and the motion passes. We're coming into the last item on the agenda, Board Forum. This is an opportunity for board members to talk about what's going on in the district from their vantage point as board members. So does anybody have anything for Board Forum? Ms. Thompson.
Well, I'm just excited for the school year to have started and for the Unified High School to have begun. My daughter is a 10th grader, and so far has enjoyed her first couple of days of school. I mean, as much as any 10th grader can enjoy going back to school in the fall. And then I did get an email in Parent View that I just wanted to share with the community in case you don't check your Parent View or you haven't seen it. Ms. Olson, who is our Career Pathways Coordinator, sent out a Google Classroom signup for all of our career pathway programs that we have in the school. That way, your kids can access information about a career pathway they might be interested in. You know, we have automotive industry, we have the business side of it, we have communications and tech and engineering and manufacturing and IT and health and wellness, and we have a new education pathway, and just some great opportunities for kids to get exposure to other things. Not everybody is going to go off to post-secondary school, and many of these require post-secondary education as well. So just something for parents to consider looking at, and maybe, you know, get your kids interested in some other options. So just, I wanted to share that great way for kids to get a little more active in some of our pathway programs and for our parents to know about it as well.
Ms. Bloyd.
I just wanted to say welcome back to all of the teachers and students, and we're glad to have you in the buildings. And I see there's a bunch of government students here, so we'd love to get your feedback on the new building as well. So thank you, everyone.
Oh, Dr. Arcand.
I just want to let everybody know that's part of the White Bear Lake Area Schools, the Ramsey County League of Local Government will be starting a three-part session on artificial intelligence this Friday, from 8 to 9, and then October 11 from 8 to 9, and then November 8 from 8 to 9. So we're going to be talking about the implications of artificial intelligence, how it can be used, what are the pitfalls. So it sounds like, you know, it's going to be exciting to see how we can use it and how it's going to go. So that'll be through Ramsey County Legal Governments. You can check the website, or if you've ever gone to anything, you've gotten an email. But I'm going to go, I'm going to nerd out, so I think it'll be fun.
In the vein of, sometimes you just don't always know about all the amazing things happening in the district. This past Saturday, I went to the Gophers game because our pep band was playing on the field at halftime with the U of M pep band and bands from all over the state. Obviously, White Bear was the best one on the field. But it just, you know, I'd never been to a Gophers game, and it was just so exciting to see the White Bear kids down there with the U of M band. And it's just an incredible opportunity for our students. So thank you for all the things that we know about and that we, you know, don't always see that are going on in the district. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Chair, I have motion for an adjournment.
A motion by Dr. Arcand, and a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Daniels. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, and we are adjourned.